Misunderstood.
Sorry, I almost killed you.
Kids with learning and attention issues are misunderstood too. Take the time to understand. Learn more at understood.org.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the April 7th regular city council meeting for the city of Ellensburg. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Palmer.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the greatness of our own.
Clerk, call the roll.
Bochon?
Here.
Goodlow?
Here.
Loquist?
Here.
Elliott?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
So we have two proclamations that are available on page 27 and 28 of the packet. One was for Arbor Day 2025, signed, and one was for National Safe Digging Month 2025. We have no awards or recognitions. We move to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move for amendment to the agenda that we move up new business, item 11A, the 2023 Electrical System Plan update before 10A.
Second. So motion second to amend the agenda before approval to move item 11A, which is page 101 in the packet, to page 74 in the packet, which would be just before item 10A. We're voting on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 My two vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Now we have an amended agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move for approval of the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
My two vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So consent agenda, motion, and second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 My two vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Item 6A, this is Board and Commission Appointment Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and there will be an opportunity for public comment. This is page 71.
Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce Arlo Ebesick, who understands recreational sports tourism and has an extensive background in building statewide tournaments. We are very excited by his interest and pending appointment to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and I'd love for him to say a few words.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I, me and my family moved here four years ago from a small town. Being in a small town, the community here has welcomed us better than we could have ever asked. I run youth sporting tournaments all over the Northwest, basketball, baseball, and I coach. I just came banquet from basketball. So to get involved on, in the community on a different side of things, as well as something that impacts our business and the partnerships we work with, with cities and hotels and communities, not just here, but throughout the state, just to kind of get a better understanding of it, is something that I would love the opportunity to have and be involved with. So appreciate the consideration.
Hang on just a sec, council. Do you have any questions?
Just, have you done a tournament here in Ellensburg yet?
About 30 of them.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Baseball, basketball, college.
It's pretty busy.
Yeah, we have one this weekend if you want to see what it looks like. Or umpire.
No, no.
Definitely appreciate you willing to participate in it, and thank you for serving on, organizing all those tournaments is very important, especially for our kids to be out there in access. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, council.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of appointment of Arlo Ebesick to the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission.
Second.
Motion second to appoint Mr. Ebesick to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 My two vote aye opposed. That motion passes.
Okay. Next item is Kitcom update. The Kitcom director is Rich Elliott. He's putting his other hat on at the moment. And I don't know what to say to fill the time, so.
Got any good jokes? I couldn't have had that, man.
Those usually backfire on me, so I try to avoid it.
Okay, good afternoon to the council and the viewing audience. So I was asked to update the council and the community about the status of Kitcom and the progress that we've been making. So I will go through very briefly what Kitcom is, sort of what happens when you're calling 911, and I will play a video for you if it works.
911, what is the location of your emergency?
When you call 911, a trained emergency services dispatcher answers the call and determines the questions from a predetermined protocol.
All right, so we're going to notify law enforcement. Just go ahead and stay on the line, and then I'll have a couple of questions for you.
As the dispatcher works to gather information, they utilize a countywide public safety radio system to alert responders to your emergency.
Kitcom Ellensburg, assault in progress, 700 East Elm V Road, Kitcom.
Squad for tape. Squad for seven.
Here at Kitcom, the Kittittas County 911 Center, our dispatchers are trained to handle emergency and non-emergency calls from law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services, while also managing and coordinating responses via phone and radio.
Squad for seven.
115, 137, 1400.
One of the most important things you can do when calling 911 is know your location. Please remember to stay on the line to answer the dispatcher's questions so they can relay information to the responders.
Okay, great. Thank you, John. We've already notified law enforcement. If anything escalates before they get there, just go ahead and call us right back on 911.
In an emergency situation in Kittittas County, call 911 if you can, text if you can't. For non-emergency situations, please call 509-925-8534. That didn't work out. How do I get back to my thing? My daughter has to reset my phone. No, I'm stuck on the YouTube page. There it goes. Okay. Okay, so we'll talk a little bit about the background activity, and this is going to be important when we talk about staffing. So we managed about 49,000 calls last year. This does not include calls that don't involve situations where we needed to send resources. So this more than doubles the call volume. About 130 dispatched calls and 300 non-dispatch calls or interactions daily. We certify law enforcement agencies and 11 fire and EMS agencies. The only agency that we don't support directly is Washington State Patrol in this county. They have regional dispatch centers. There's, I think, three of them left in the state. And so if the call is entirely an accident without injuries, they don't need fire, and it is on one of the freeway, part of the freeway system, then those calls are forwarded to State Patrol, but they come here first, just in case they need the aid piece and stuff. One of the things that we're finding, and this is true in most areas, is that we're our own worst enemy, and we've got people programmed to call 911, but they're calling 911 for things that are not emergencies. They're calling to find out if this is daylight savings time. They're calling to find out, hey, I don't know where to vote. Where do I get a building permit? Those kinds of things. And so the dispatchers prioritize 911 and emergency radio traffic above everything else. And so when you disrupt the system by asking for non-emergent advice or assistance, utilizing 911, you potentially disrupt or delay services to somebody else. So we want people to call if they have a medical problem that requires an ambulance, you know, fire and smoke investigations, if there's a crime in progress or the crime has just occurred, it is a priority. If it's something that happened quite a while ago and you've just discovered it, you showed up at your cabin or something like that, that can be handled through the business lines. We currently have six 911 lines. They actually come into the dispatch center in two separate ways, so somebody shouldn't be able to accidentally cut through both sets of 911 lines. And then those are backed up by additional routes that we can receive information all the way up into, including, we have Aries, RACIS, or ham radio operators if, you know, the whole system blows up. The traditional landlines are traced, meaning that we know what address they're assigned to. So that address pops up. There's two geographical, geographical location softwares that are tied to the 911 system, and the dispatchers are trained to find out where you are if for some reason either of those systems is down or both systems are down. About 10% of the 911 calls are true emergencies, meaning that they are time critical, and you could have a bad outcome if there isn't a timely response. We get highly visible incidents in this with the valley floor. A brush fire can generate anywhere from 100 to 150 911 calls while we're trying to dispatch the resources, while we're trying to talk to the homeowners who are actually in the pathway of fire, and we don't know that call number 127 isn't a choking kid. So we got to answer them all. So, and they answer them effectively in the order that they're received. We do have five business lines that do include some after-hours answering service for some agencies. The city of Ellensburg has some of those lines, and we do see about 1% to 2% of actual emergencies that end up getting reported through the business lines, things that we dispatch emergency resources for. So one of the things that we have instituted is we have what's called call gating, so the dispatchers can turn the business lines off. And there's probably people in this audience who weren't happy about that related to a power outage. So we had about 250 to 300 notifications for a power outage in the last two weeks. And during that time period, there was also a lot of background emergency traffic, and people were calling to find out when's the power going to get turned back on and reporting a power outage that obviously was in process, and we knew when we had dispatched the power company. That's going to continue, and it's going to continue just because I don't have the staffing to handle all of the background business line traffic. So it goes to an answering service or an answering phone tree. The phone tree basically says, if you're calling to report an emergency, hang up and dial 911, so you get back in line. If you're calling about the power outage, they can do on-the-fly announcements. They just type into the IM and it creates a message for them. Then the people will be told, we're aware there's a power outage. We don't know when it's going to go, and you can go to some of the utilities and go ahead and report that directly to them. So our highest priority is protect the safety of the officers and firefighters and also the public, but we do so for the responders by making sure that we send resources to the right address. So we will confirm things. A small percentage of the times people's location does not go into the system correctly. So we'll have to make sure that that happens. We try to let the caller know what's about to occur so they're not surprised by something and react in a way that potentially has an injury associated with it. We are looking up for, like, law enforcement. We're looking up the people that law enforcement's about to come in contact with. So we're collecting names, and we're running you through the national databases and looking for officer safety issues associated with it, weapons, previous declarations that you want to die by suicide by police officer. Those will flag that particular name record. And so anytime there's a response to that name record, the officers are made aware of it ahead of time so that there isn't, they're not unprepared. We track and status the units. Law enforcement, we're maintaining a very tight control on them. So there's a timer on the screen, and every time, you know, their entry turns orange and starts to flash, they do a radio traffic just to confirm that the officer is doing okay. And they'll do that for fire as well when it's requested. We don't routinely do that for fire agencies. We're looking for keywords, stress in the radio traffic, those kinds of things that might indicate that there's a problem that they can't talk about, and then we'll send additional help. Again, we're looking at the background checks for the people they're contacting and any weapons information, those types of things, to make sure that the officers know. As shown in the video, the dispatchers are trained in what's called an emergency medical or emergency fire dispatch. There's different systems. Ours is actually called those two things, EMD, EFD. And effectively what it does is when you call into 911, they're going to confirm your location. They're going to get a nature of the call, you know, is it an assault? Is it shortness of breath? Those kinds of things. And they'll establish really quickly what the acuity is. In other words, how sick are you? Or how bad is the situation? And then our average time right now for dispatching is about 22 seconds. So after we've answered the phone call, they've collected those three pieces of information, and generally the other dispatchers are dispatching the call. We're answering about 95% of the 911 lines inside of one ring. That goes, that falls apart during, you know, a time when we have a lot of 911 calls. And then they'll come back to the caller, and there'll be a dispatcher that is going to be working with the caller to advise them of things that they might do to improve the medical situation, things they might do for their own personal safety if it's an assault or something like that. So they'll walk through the incident with the individual. And we did have a situation in this county in the last two months where the dispatchers calling the RP back showed up on the phone, and the person who was assaulting, which was a very serious assault, told the police officer that if I hadn't seen Kitcom on the phone, I'd have killed that person. So. So they're doing continuing education. Our training program takes anywhere from six to nine months to fully qualify the dispatcher, and we pay you to get trained if it is interesting. I'm not allowed to ask city employees, but you guys are good. So we're also updating the databases. When we find information, you know, occasionally we'll find corrections, and we try to make sure that it gets correct. Warrant information, protection orders, those types of things. We want that to be accurate. Missing persons, stolen items, vehicles, those kinds of things. The radio transaction and most of the information on the phone calls is recorded. Most of the lines are recorded going into the dispatch center, and we receive a lot of public records of costs, some of them extraordinary. We have one that's probably going to take us about three and a half years to fulfill. So right now, we have, staffing is our priority. We were down to five full-time employees. Full-time staffing was 16 authorized. We haven't been there for a little while, and there's a bunch of reasons for that. So we were asking people to miss their kids' birthdays and to work, routinely work 18 hours a day and then come back to work the next day, and that's not healthy or sustainable. It was part of the reason we were down to five employees. So we have put in an emphasis on that. We are effectively up to eight full-time employees, and we are using contracted labor and part-time assistants to balance it out, to sort of give the dispatchers their work-life balance back so that they don't quit and go away. We are starting an academy on Monday, the 14th. It'll take 12 to 16 weeks, and then we'll put them onto the floor where they'll work with the dispatchers. And our goal is to take the nine, 10-month training program that used to be and condense it down to somewhere between five and six months. And so far, that trend line seems to be working. Infrastructure funding. Our community, Kittittas County, passed, actually with a fairly substantial margin, a 2/10 of 1% sales tax that was authorized by the state legislature to pay for 911 infrastructure and maintenance. So we cannot pay for dispatchers. We cannot pay for operations out of that funding. That's not what the funding's for. However, we can pay for all the radio towers, all the phone equipment, the software updates, the people that take care of all of those things. And so that has infused the dispatch center with a significant funding mechanism, which we were worried about, and it's going to allow us to use the existing funding streams to take care of the things that we need to take care of. We were behind on our infrastructure, and deferred maintenance always costs you more. Tribute to Delano there. I think that's a quote, just saying. We have replaced all the critical systems. We are in the process of updating all of our proactive maintenance, and what you'll see over the next three to four years is fairly significant investment in the current infrastructure, and then you'll see an expansion of the current infrastructure. We're going to tie into, State Patrol and DOT have a radio system network that obviously follows the transportation corridors, which happens to be where our blind spots are. So we get large incidents. Backside of riot grass is an example. I ran two MCIs, mass casualty incidents there about five weeks apart, two winters ago, and we had no radio communications whatsoever. We were in a dead spot. We'll tie into the State Patrol and DOT's system at very low cost, and we'll do some changes to our radios, and that should significantly upgrade our coverage for the county. We are also looking at two additional towers as people build in the river and creek drainages. That's the hardest part for the radios to, it's not entirely line of sight, but it's pretty close to line of sight. The UHF capabilities is the DOT and the State Patrol system, 700 and 800 megahertz. We are going to be looking at a CAD as computer-aided dispatch. That's a software. We may replace our CAD. It's 20-something years old, and if they stop supporting it, then we will have no choice. Where we will upgrade the software if they give us that choice and we're still happy with it, that's going to be a big deal, and hopefully right as I leave. We are looking at AI technology. There are ways to reasonably safely use AI right now to manage some of the call volume and help us make decisions. We're being very cautious at Kitcom because, A, I don't understand it, and so I don't know what's bad and what's good and what's going to work and what's not. So I've made it very clear that Kitcom's going to be, will follow somebody after they get all bruised up, but we're not going to be on the bleeding edge for technology. We've also initiated a wellness program. So just for information, or just kind of, if you think about this scenario, you can be a dispatcher who answers the phone, and it's a parent whose baby's not breathing. And that's highly emotional, and you're with that parent probably for a few minutes while you wait for the resources to go, and then the phone hangs up, and you don't get to hear the outcome because they've disconnected. So we're trying to follow up so that they know what those outcomes are be. By the way, that dispatcher, the next call they take, is probably a parking complaint where somebody wants to swear at them for three minutes about how their neighbor's not parking appropriately. And so those are the things that the dispatchers are having to deal with, and so we're trying to give them a way to sort of process that so that this doesn't burn them out too soon. We are a nonprofit organization. Effectively, we're a co-op, so we have a board. We have articles from corporation, but, you know, we respond to our user agencies and to the taxpayers. So our funding comes from two separate sources, or really three separate sources, excuse me. We get 2/10 sales tax. That's the system maintenance. We anticipate that that will generate about $3-plus million a year, at least early in this process. Surpluses each year, we need to talk to our board, which meets on Thursday, and those are our public meetings at the fire station out on the Vantage Highway. But the surpluses each year, our intent is to begin to put that money into a fund that would replace or upgrade the facility, because the facility is 26 years old, and it will need an upgrade and potentially a little bit of expansion. So we're going to try to put the surplus into that fund so that we don't have to go out for a really expensive bond issue in 15 years. We also get money from the state. When I say it's from the state, it's from the taxpayers. So on your landlines and on your cellphones, and there are some other, there's some very small sources of revenue, but you pay an excise tax. That excise tax generates about $1.2 million in Kittittas County. It's a really weird process they go through to do it, and we under-collect in this county because a lot of people who have moved here or moved here for short periods of time, you know, consider this their home, but if your cell phone company thinks you live in Bellevue, that's where your excise tax goes. So we're trying to get people to move their phone service, get their address changed with their phone company so that the excise tax comes to the county where the actual impact for 911 is. The state does hold back about a third of that money. We get 2/3 of it, and then they make us do things like certify our dispatchers, attend trainings, those types of things, and we get the rest of the money throughout the year. And then the contracts with the user agencies, we base that off how intensely they use the system. And so our budget for the last two years has been $3.2 million for operations. $2 million of that has come from the user agencies, and we just split it up. So agencies like Ellensburg Police Department, Kittittas County Sheriffs, and Kittittas Valley Fire and Rescue pay proportionally a lot more than a small fire district like Vantage or Easton might pay. It's based off their usage, and we calculate it off the year before, and then they get the bill. They get four bills a year. So. So things are trending in the right direction. The light at the end of the tunnel does not appear to be a train. So we're making progress, and I think the staffing will be fixed in about 18 months. We need to do some internal training because people have not been supervisors for a long time. They've just been nose-down doing dispatching. And the infrastructure improvements, and then I hope in three, four years, I'll be training my replacement. So, any questions?
Rich, go back to the comment regarding the cell phone and the notifying your carrier that you're in Ellensburg. Is that literally tied to their billing address or something else?
Yes, wherever they receive their bill.
Okay, wherever they receive their bill. All right, so everybody here, call Verizon, T-Mobile, all your things, and make sure it's here.
And we recognize that people live in multiple communities, and, you know, like, for the college students, you know, it's probably not going to happen with all of them, but if they're spending eight or nine months a year, this is where the impact is, and we'd like to see that happen. People who own second and third homes, if they're spending the majority of their time in Sun Cadia or something like that, we'd like them to change their, because this is where the impact is. One way or another, you're going to pay for the service. Because it's.
The area code of your phone number doesn't affect that at all?
Area codes won't do it for you in other communities. Here, it would put you in Eastern Washington. So no, your area code won't fix that.
I mean, it's not, it has nothing to do with it. It's not detrimental to the revenue that could be generated?
Area code won't matter. You tell them where you live.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, item seven is public comment on non-agenda items. We'll get the list here. So this is an opportunity for speakers, you'll have three minutes, to speak to the council and to the community about an item that is not on the agenda but one which the council has a rollover. Don't identify yourself as being affiliated with any campaign candidate whatsoever, and address the council on the matters identified in the registration form. Must concern city business again. When you approach, please state your name, whether you live in Ellensburg, Kittittas County, or elsewhere. State whether you're representing yourself or others, and then let us know what the topic is. And just, again, just a quick warning, don't engage in conduct that disrupts or disturbs your early conduct of this meeting. And please note that city council rules mean that we likely won't respond. We may give you a pathway to get additional information. We may, you know, say, hey, we want to talk about this later, but we're not going to talk about something that's not on the agenda. So Naomi Peterson and Unity Park. Yes, ma'am.
I've got this written down, so I'll stay within three minutes. I want to say thank you. And it's thank you for Unity Park. And it was very well designed for the purpose of bringing the community together, which we saw Saturday with a very popular rally of over 500 people gathering peacefully. Also, the process of getting permission for such public gatherings was very straightforward, and the police were very supportive and gave advanced training on safety and very helpful advice for documenting any hecklers or aggression, which we did experience a little bit. But we just wanted to say thank you. Well done. It was worth waiting for the construction, and the accessibility is particularly noteworthy. So I thought, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience?
Is there anything you wanted me to? I forgot, you said you might ask questions?
I'm sorry, we might direct you to a place where you might get some additional information. So, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Naomi Peterson, and I live on 7th Avenue East.
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry, I forgot to push that.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Thomas. I'm a resident of Ellensburg, and I'm speaking on my own behalf. I would like to make a statement regarding the City Parks. First, I want to say thank you for maintaining our parks. They really are wonderful. I specifically want to thank you for maintaining the grounds at Mountain View Park. I live across from Mountain View Park, and I've used the park since I was a child. I would like to voice my opposition to the 2015 long-term plan for Mountain View Park, and I offer a way to give money back to the budget for the racquetball club replacement for tennis courts for the schools and maintenance of all city parks. I'm not opposed to a community center and tennis courts being built somewhere, and I'm happy to be part of problem solving. However, the long-range plan shows a building, six tennis courts with lights, and a very large parking lot. The January Parks Meeting notes reflect asking for eight courts. After the last meeting, I was told the bid for courts had gone out, but there wouldn't be lights at the courts. But at the last city council meeting, we heard that state funding for these courts had not been appropriated or approved. I'm not trying to cause a stir, but simply to suggest perhaps none of these plans are what is really needed or wanted. Nearly every day of the year, I see moms with their kids, I see individuals running through their workouts, and I see people playing informal and formal sports at Mountain View. I was also informed by someone from City Parks that this soccer field is the busiest field in the city. Paving over that would likely create a new problem. The long-range plan was done before the racquetball club fire and likely before knowledge the pool would possibly need a lot of maintenance, and perhaps before it was concluded, the updated high school and middle school would not have tennis facilities. high school and middle school would not have tennis facilities. It makes more sense to save these dollars and put them into a racquetball club replacement or perhaps combined with an overhaul of the pool as well as tennis courts directly across from the high school. The master plan was also finalized before two new housing developments on and near the Kidattas Highway. I'm concerned that if we do not leave Mountain View Park green for use for soccer or other facilities, in five to 10 years, we'll be talking about needing a new, large, green space, improved park where citizens can congregate for soccer and other activities in this part of town. These spaces are important to fostering a healthy citizenry that can meet the neighbors, make new friends and remain healthy throughout their lives while enjoying the beautiful outdoor landscape and wildlife of our pretty little valley in the center of the state. Of note, we often have large populations of migratory and local birds as well as deer in our neighborhood and over my lifetime, I've seen their habitats shrink a lot both along and near Mountain View Park. I want to be part of the solution. I've expressed my willingness to be part of a lasting, prudent solution for school tennis courts and a community center to the Parks and Recreation Committee and now to you. Knowing what we've learned since 2015 about valley growth, budgeting, racquetball, tennis and pool facility needs, Mountain View Park is in my view, not the correct site for the civic center and/or tennis courts with or without lights. We can solve big problems, but we need to do that looking forward and with a wider aperture. Lastly, I want to invite everyone to Mountain View Park. It's a wonderful place to recreate and just after dark, before the park closes, it offers one of the most beautiful views of the eastern sky and of stars within the city. You can see Orion, Cassiopeia and the Big Dipper all at once.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
Julianne Clement, Kidattas County resident and I will be representing myself. I want to speak on the, the social media policy study issue from tonight. I'd like to respectfully draw your attention to section three, subsection I, where it's talking about, the language there is very clear, banning and blocking user from social media. The city reserves the right at any time and without prior notice to ban or block any individual who violates this policy. Then I want to contrast that with F, which is, seems to be a repeat of, they seem to be the same. There, I feel like the language is a little bit ambiguous where it states the city of Ellensburg reserves the right to deny access to the city of Ellensburg's social media sites for any individual who violates the city of Ellensburg's social media policy and at any time and without notice. So my concern is that, that the at any time and without notice with the and there, it implies that the two are exclusive of each other, which I pretty much think that you mean exactly what you said in I, but do you, I'm just concerned that that language sounds like could be confused that it's if you violate their policy and you could be removed at any time and without prior notice. So we all know that city council members can change, city employees can change, we could get a new social media director, we could get a new lawyer, we could get a new city manager. And so I would hope that you would look at my concern and maybe remove the and or just remove F altogether since I is very clearly stated. Or I'm sorry, it's in section N. It's only got one policy or one subsection there or item there. Then the other thing I wanted to address was just when we were talking about this evening, whether or not comments should be left on or off. And I would like to urge you to leave comments on in light of our First Amendment rights. And also it seems that there isn't really a precedent to do that as the director of the social media was talking about, they haven't really had to restrict or remove anybody. And so I hope you would take my concerns seriously and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online? No, okay. We will move on to nothing with public hearings, no ordinance and resolutions. So we move to what is now the new 10A, which is the 2023 Electrical System Plan, 2023?
That's correct.
Okay. And there will be an opportunity for public comment and this is page 101 of your packet of your following along.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Buddy Stanich, Energy Services Director. Every six years, the Light Department goes out for and hires a consultant to perform a electrical system plan. That was done at the end of 2023 and why we're here in 2025. I have Jeff and Evan from Power Engineers here to present on that plan. A lot has gone into this, a lot of review. It was presented at the Utility Advisor Committee last month and they moved it forward, recommending approval tonight. So without any further ado, we introduce Jeff and Evan to take you through a short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Buddy. Nice to see you both again. My name is Evan Powers. I'm an electrical engineer for Power Engineers Incorporated, a member of WSP. I'm expecting that this presentation will take 10 to 15 minutes and we will be welcoming questions at the end of the presentation. As stated before, we performed the capital facilities plan and the 20-year system plan at six-year intervals, six and 20-year intervals. And we did intermediate steps in between evaluating the city's electrical system at stages of Central Washington University's decarbonization plan. This study is a guiding document. As Buddy stated, it's performed about every six years and as state, federal and local laws change and regulations change, these type of studies should be performed every six years to evaluate those. Some of the loads we applied to the electrical system were a 2% customer load growth for over 20 years. We were notified of commercial and industrial spot loads new to the system. Central Washington University provided us with a outline of their decarbonization from natural gas plans, the addition of a Winco facility in two stages, natural gas conversion in the residential space, EV charging in the residential space as well and two public EV charging stations along the interstate. Here are the projected loads. We started with a base peak load and that is today of 53.8 megawatts. And the six-year plan is going to be the 2030 loads. The 20-year plan is going to be the 2044 loads and Central Washington University will have stages in between. Are, we all, for the residential natural gas and the EV conversions in the residential space, we applied multipliers to the 2030 and 2044 systems. The multiplier for the residential gas in 2030 six-year plan was based off of input from a study done for the city by Light House Energy Consulting in August of 2023. This report was taken into account by city and our engineers and we came up with a multiplier of 1.3 to apply to the system in the residential space. The 2044 gas multiplier was from everybody, the typical heat pump from natural gas to electric heat pump conversion rate. And the EV installation in residential space was calculated from just the typical EV residential charger. Oops. Here's a chart of all the loads. The blue line is starting at the base and this is all the loads taken into account together. And as you can see, we have the six and the 20-year points. In reality, these are going to be smoother, but they look very drastic because we only evaluated some of these loads at the six and 20-year points. So I did also want to note that 54 total to a 93 total is about a 69% increase of load to your system in six years and a 54 to 168 is about a 300% jump in load. So, and these, I did want to point out that these are conservative assumptions and some of these loads will happen, some of these loads will not happen. As I said, between state and federal laws, things change every day. In a different slide, I will talk about Central Washington University's stages. That is now. So here's a breakdown of Central Washington University's. They are planning in seven stages. And as a reminder, here's the six and the 20-year points. I did want to point out there is a drop in consumption right here and that's due to the decommissioning of different loads on campus, predicted decommissioning. Central Washington University has been in communication with the city and that's how we got this information. And a breakdown of Central Washington University's decarbonization analysis can be found in appendix C of the report in, I believe you all should have. Now we're going to talk about residential gas conversion. So as I said before, that 2044 multiplier was based off of heat pump exchanges and that's going to be our biggest driver in load going from natural gas heat to electrical And so the multipliers are directly tied to the addition of customers when we analyze this. So that two times multiplier, at the six-year point, we are assuming that all, we assumed that all new builds, all new customers would be electric and not natural gas heat. And the, the rate, so this curve is going to be dramatic or smooth depending on the existing customer transfer rate. So it is dependent on how quick people get off of natural gas that this is going to impact the system. I do recommend that this is reevaluated as we go and it should be reevaluated every time a long-range plan is performed on the city. These are the system improvement costs we've identified in the study. This is over 20 years, so I know this is a big number, but this is over the course of 20 years. We are predicting that we would like, we would like to propose a expansion of the current East Ellensburg substation. Currently, it's a single bank substation. We would like to propose that it is improved to a double bank. And we're predicting that with four feeders to serve system capacity and Central Washington University, that is going to cost around, in today's dollars, 3.5 million dollars. A new South Ellensburg upstation with feeders and that's going to be about a little bit over $5 million and that's due to the requirement of a tap off of the BPA line. And also transmission from the BPA line to said tap, we're predicting that it's going to be about two and a half million dollars. And then to serve the natural gas conversion in the West interchange area, we are predicting, we're proposing a new substation in the West Helena area. I will now pass the torch to my colleague, Jeff Shoup, and he will talk to you about AMI implementation and coordinating with Bonville Power Administration.
Thank you. Nice to see you all again. So planning with BPA, BPA is the energy supplier, the electric supplier for the city. They have regional transmission lines that serve the Kidattas Valley area. There are two main lines that come in from BPA. One is from the east and it comes east and then through the, and serves the city from the north. That comes from a substation called Columbia. There's also a line to the south that comes south from Moxie. Those are the two main sources that come into the valley. Those transmission lines not only serve the city, but they also serve Kidattas County PUD and also some substations for Puget Sound Energy. We have coordinated with BPA and examined some of the information that they have. BPA does constant planning and projection of what their system requirements are, where there might be pinch points or bottlenecks. One of them that they have identified is that south line from Moxie is protected by BPA to be 112% loaded by 2030. So that's, that's without any improvements. So BPA has recognized this and their projected loads and they have recommended or they have planned for a reconducting or upgrade of that transmission line from Moxie up to Ellensburg. With the, it was originally, the improvement was originally scheduled for this year. That has been delayed and it is now projected to happen in 2028. We recommend keeping an eye on and coordinating with BPA, more or less try to keep their feet on the fire. We don't want, I think it would be good not to have that overload occur and be an issue. That overload, by the way, is a summertime load, not, not, and the city, the city's peak load is in the winter, but this, this could be an issue for service into the area. With the improvement that BPA has planned, that brings the loading down to 64% on that line. So that leaves capacity for additional growth, some of the growth that we've just talked about. The north line, the Columbia-Ellensburg line is, does not have a present bottleneck on it and is projected to have about 42% utilization by BPA in 2032. So there is capacity in the lines, that critical improvement by BPA on the Moxie line is, is something to stay focused on. Now I'm going to jump to a different subject that we included in the report and that is a study of advanced metering infrastructure or AMI metering implementation. There are many utilities that are implementing advanced metering. One of the big drivers is, is it helps reduce operating and maintenance cost for the utility. Meter reading, avoiding dispatch of, you know, line resources, be able to go read a meter, for instance, on an emergency page. meter, for instance, on an emergency basis. So those, those are pretty big savings. Some of the benefits that come from the AMI system is, information is then available for customers so that they can see their own usage, and not just the block of what you used last month, but you can get a better idea of what your, what your daily usage might be and be able to tie it back if you're a customer to, oh, my, my mother-in-law came and stayed in the house with her RV for three weeks, then use some more power. So you can kind of see where the, where the, your electricity is going. These meters typically have a disconnecting means in them that's able to be done over radio or some other remote means. And that means that a customer can be turned on and turned off remotely without dispatching alignment to go and pull a meter or dispatching alignment to go replace a meter. A lot of times, those callouts happen on overtime. Customers pay late on a Friday to get their power back on, and so this is pretty common. And so it's very helpful to be able to change that service from the, from the office and be able to do it quickly.
Could maybe be used for emergency, like fires?
I'm going to get to that, yes. So, yes, the, the system would be available to do turn-ons and turn-offs for whatever appropriate reason there may be. Understanding that it only turns off at the meter, so if there's still power to the house with, with the lines, that can still be an issue for fire. Another big improvement that AMI systems bring is outage response. With the, with that system, it will know exactly which residences and which houses still have power. So which street is out? And from that information, you can usually predict what device has operated on the system, whether it's a fuse or a circuit breaker type recloser or whatever's happened, be able to identify where the problem is much more quickly. And that allows crews to go out and focus in on the likely area to find the problem without doing extensive searching around to try to figure out what, what has gone wrong. Another thing that we, that Evan talked about was the natural gas conversion and the likelihood that those will likely be replaced with heat pumps. With an AMI system, it does open the possibility of being able to do some demand management with those heat pump loads at the house. And since those, those conversions, you saw was a very significant increase in load on the city's system. So to be able to manage that increased demand over time in cooperation with programs that you set up with the customer, to be able to try to help do that, and that could help reduce the amount of, number of improvements that need to be made or the capital expenses that might need to be made to, to curate that. The other thing that, that the system can do is it, it kind of gives you some insight into what the service transformers are doing for customers. Presently, we have to estimate and try to analyze what those loads are. If somebody sneaks a Bitcoin mine into a certain house or something, I have personally seen lots of transformers get overloaded and burned out and think, well, what happened? Being able to monitor those transformer loads will be critical as you want to, as customers add home EV charging, as they do their natural gas heat pump conversions. So being able to track that will be critical and maybe help manage the cost of improve or expanding transformer capacity throughout the system. So, quick summary, we did the system study, and it is based on a six-year and, and 20-year load forecast. We rolled in the CWU decarbonization loads into a few of the other loads along there. But by and large, our projections were the six-year and the 20-year loads. We are recommending two new substations. That would be the South Ellensburg substation and to support natural, residential natural gas conversion, a East Helena substation, and the expansion of the East Ellensburg substation into a two-bank system and two new feeders from that substation to the CWU campus. All of those improvements were on the, on the list. I, I do want to mention that we also studied reliability of the systems. And so the report contains a contingency analysis for every single substation and every single source, and how does the system respond to that if that source goes down? How can the rest of the system keep the customers on? So there's, built into the improvements is contingency. I want to thank you. Questions?
We're going to take questions for you, and then we'll get to the audience here. I'm going to start off. So the smart meters, is that a recommendation here? If we adopt it, it says we're doing this, or do we have to make a separate recommendation?
This report just identifies like the pros and, and issues associated with AMI. It doesn't recommend necessarily that you do it. There are advantages and disadvantages. We recommend that you probably will need to do a, a study that specifically looks at AMI, identifies the costs, identifies the potential savings and the paybacks, and what is the balance of that on the system. One thing to consider is that the AMI system would also support natural gas and water metering as well as just the electric. So with the, with the three utilities, it gets pretty, pretty good utilization.
Counsel, any questions?
I just, this may be off topic, but appreciate it. I'll thank you for the presentation, by the way. So you said earlier, I understand, our electric power source is Bonneville majority. We have a small, tiny, tiny percentage of renewable energy. I guess my question is, does the modeling, since we're looking out 20 years or so, are we making any assumptions about that fleet, that fuel mix, if you will, not gas versus electric, but the source of electric changing? Are we seeing, are we anticipating an increase of locally generated renewable power that can get poured into the grid? Or is it so insignificant in terms of total?
Our, our report does not study Bonneville system and the changes that could happen in Bonneville.
I was talking, changes here specifically.
Now, within, within the city, we did look at spot loads. So for instance, the, I think there's a, there's a solar, potential solar in the south end of the city that's a potential. And so there is marginal capacity that we provided in the plan so that unexpected or different loads can still be served. We didn't overbuild the system, but we tried to allow for a planning capacity for.
I guess a related question. I was just curious, because I really don't understand, I get it, the general theme, but the substation expansion, it's, I get that as power demands increase, we need more capacity and so on. Does it make a difference at all how much power, electric power is generated locally in terms of how substations are located or built? In other words, there's still, we're going to consume a certain amount of electricity no matter how we get it, right? And those stations will handle all of that.
Yes, anything that comes from outside.
Coming down live on a wire from Bonneville or coming from somebody's roof panel that pushes electricity back in, right?
Okay. Yeah. So anything that would be like a distributed generation at customer sites, whether it was wind or solar panels on the roof, et cetera, will change the customer's load. So depending on how intense that development is with customers, it would change the load projection. And I thought it's something to look for in the next study. Is that happening? Can we anticipate that happening more? How much might happen? And that might reduce the loads that were projected and potentially eliminate some of the improvements that were needed.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that very much.
I have a question. I noticed in your chart on system spot loads, you have the Black Horse housing development listed. Is that, that's not in the city limits, but it is in the growth management? Okay. Did you take into account all the other potential users in the growth management area right now of, in your projections, or?
Yes, we did. We looked at the whole growth management area, and when we looked at, here's kind of a, an example of the, one of those growth areas that we. The number of customers on the, on the system will double. So they had to go somewhere. They're not, they're not going to be within the existing footprint of the city. So within the growth management area, we projected those loads and we distributed those, those customers around to anticipate what they, what it might be.
And as you can see, we, the, the urban growth area plan that the city already has in place, you can see kind of what we did. We took areas that are a field. They could be anything, but it is a potential area for residential expansion. So those are some of the areas we identified that, and those are, so what we did first for the six-year plan was we took the amount of residents that have already been identified, all the housing developments that have already been identified and planned, and we took those numbers into account. And then the leftover of the 2% were equally distributed through this space. So that is our conservative distribution of new customers with the excess of the 2% over 20 years.
I was just curious, did you, I noticed you, you projected for business growth also. Any of that business growth in the growth management area in the northern part of the community, or?
The business growth was, is the spot loads that have already been, the large spot loads that have already been, they've already approached the city and requested connection.
Okay, thank you. Then I just had one other question.
Go ahead.
You made a comment that by 2030, you anticipated all new builds would be all electric.
Yes, that is a conservative, that's a conservative assumption, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
This is just more of a comment for all the citizens in here that are, maybe some of you are following this, some of them you may not. So just a quick summary. Thank you, Evan and Jeff, for presenting again. They presented this to UAC, and we had a opportunity to ask a lot of questions. Summing this up is that there are a lot of internal and external factors that impact our electrical grid and things that we have to consider. The city staff does an excellent job, work with power engineers and all the large utility users, including CWU, as far as planning out the next couple of years. But there are risks out there that we're looking at, monitoring, and we have to pay attention at the state level and the federal level as far as what those impacts look like. As we grow in electricity usage across the region, those are things that we have to look at. There is a concern regarding transmission. And transmission is essentially saying that if you're going to be making a feeder to be able to bring power, you got to make sure that it's sized up enough. The issue is, our feeders are only built to certain capacity. So this goes back to what he was talking about regarding the Moxie line. So you hear me talk about it all the time, but infrastructure is the heart blood of our, our community. Everybody's fine and complaining about a lot of different things, but when you can't flush your toilet or your lights are off for an extended amount of period, that's when people really get upset. So making those critical decisions, having meters so that we can make those data-informed decisions are really critical to all the things that we'd like to do in the future. And this also speaks to resiliency. Resiliency is built in our self-sufficiency. Self-sufficiency means being able to generate our own power. So I know there are a lot of ideas. I know there are a lot of pushes out there to hopefully generate electricity in our community, and those are the types of things that help to offset some of these current concerns and risk factors that we can control by doing things that we can control, can control in our community.
Thank you. Questions from the audience? And same thing, introduce yourself, where you're from.
Chris Carlson, Kidattas County. I started with Puget Power back when it was the only Puget Power back in '72, and I built substations, highlines, distribution. I just don't get how they can talk about decarbonization, shutting down those huge gas boilers at the college. And at the same time, our senators, Murray and Camp, want to tear down the Snake River dams, which are Bonneville. How are you going to replace the megawatts? He's saying there's a 300% jump in power usage. How are we going to replace that with the windmills on a day when the wind's not turning, you know, blowing? Or when these solar panels over by the freeway when the sun's not out? I don't get the math when it just went like this, 300%. It's not going to happen. It's a fallacy because if our senators have our, their way, they would tear down the Snake River dams. We might as well tear down Grand Coop, make sure the fish can get back up into the upper Columbia. I've worked with Bonneville. I spent two years as an inspector on highlines and substation construction. It's not out there, not what you're talking about, and not if every other community in the whole state wants to go this same route. Got to have, you got to have a real vision that Bonneville's not a, it's, it's not just infinite amount of power. There is a tap, and we, we have a 500,000-volt line down in the Dallas that sends a lot of our power to California. So I don't know. I'd like to know where you're going to get the megawatts.
So just, just for purposes, that, that's not what this, I mean, the, the location, this is the internal piece, and so that's what we're going to be talking about today. I think we recognize that there are discrepancies in power generation, and, you know, we live in a state where the CCA passed and passed a referendum. So we're dealing with the reality that's in front of us right now. And so the power generation piece is, is a conversation for a different time. This is on this plan, the distribution, and sort of moving the city forward in terms of the, the electrical growth load that we're projecting based on current circumstances. So anybody else who wishes to speak? Anybody online? Okay. Thank you, and counsel?
I'll move to accept the 2023 electric system plan as complete.
A motion second to accept the 2023 electrical system plan as complete, is there any discussion?
I, I just want to add that this is a plan, best knowledge that we have in front of us right now, and we will be monitoring and adjusting as things move forward and policies change or new technology comes online. All of that is going to have to, we're, we're going to have to stay flexible, but, but this gives us some numbers and some, some, some reality checks for the near term at least. You know, whether, whether or not policy changes, we know we're going to need more power in the future, and we know we're going to need the, some additional transmission lines and some additional substations. And some of those things are already in the works. So, thank, thank you for the report.
Any other discussion?
Just comment that, yeah, a, a lot of these things that were mentioned as far as a comment, these are all things that city, university, power engineers are aware of as far as those external factors that, yeah, are general concerns for our resiliency. And so hence the comments on the supportive infrastructure, being able to generate our own electric power. So more to come.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Two vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Item 10A, which is page 75 in the packet, is a continued discussion on renewing the Transportation Benefit District, or TBD, funding by ballot measure in 2025. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Heidi Behrens-Ternaway, City Manager. I have a whole team of staff here, too, that is ready and able to answer questions as we go along. I'm going to do a brief presentation. I have a number of slides with some images to kind of help folks who haven't been along for the discussion to get a little background of the issue for tonight, but I'll try to keep my presentation brief. So we started this discussion as we closed out the, the city's budget this last year, and that is, there are tax-supported, or tax-supported services that the city provides and user-supported services that the city provides. And in that budget structure, there exists a structural deficit that happens over time in our tax-supported services. So these are things that you don't pay for direct services essentially. There are restrictions on the increase in revenues in those tax-supported services, and especially the last few years with high rates of inflation, every single input to those services has gone up. So every single project that we So every single project that we've done, when we're building a street, and every staff person, all the labor inputs, all the supply, all the supplies, and really all the capital projects as well. So it's always an ongoing issue, but this last year it was particularly difficult. And when we're talking about general government and tax-supported services, we're really talking about kind of the administration of government. We're also talking about our parks and recreation programs, our library programs, our engineering. Again, you drive down the street, so typically you're not paying a fee to drive down that street, so those are all very much tax-supported services, police services as well, and a number of others. And so typically we'd see about a 3% increase per year in the cost of providing these services. And again, we've seen 7, 8, 9% inflation the last couple of years. So just a quick snapshot of how these services are funded. If you look at our general fund revenue, those are those general government services. A high amount, about 62% of how those are funded, are actually funded through taxes. The charges for services are the things that, again, our utilities have to act as their own businesses. If we're providing, for instance, payroll or billing for those services, those are actually charged, and so those are supported essentially by some of our utilities. And so, but the primary focus of our general fund services is tax-supported. If we break down that 68% of tax-supported services, about a quarter is funded by property taxes. Our property taxes are limited to 1% growth per year, and so if you can imagine on an 8% increase in, in, just in one year, you're already behind. So that's when we call, when we talk about a structural deficit, that's what we're experiencing. And sales tax is typically fairly elastic and is used for about, about 50% of our general fund revenues. And then our BNO taxes, again, these are utility taxes, gambling taxes, cable for instance. And we're pretty middle of the road when it comes to the percentage of our general fund that's actually supported by our BNO taxes compared to other cities as well. So again, the structural deficit, and please don't get too concerned here, the, this is the ending fund balance, that's the blue line that you're going to see on the bottom. And each time we do a budget, and again, the city does a biennial budget, the total uses essentially are our expenses over time and the total sources. And so we're always doing the balancing act to adjust, and oftentimes we're planning in our budget to spend some of our fund balance, but we try not to do that and try to manage away from that. And generally try to, to project in our, our resources fairly conservatively so we're not overspending over time. But it's always a very important balancing act, and this, this particular budget was very difficult because there was such a gap. So just a little bit about sales tax. One of the things that, one of the things that we can do over time is as we're doing new services or helping support general services, the community actually elected to post a ballot measure to, to add sales tax funding for public service over the last few years. So that's really helped in when it comes to our public safety services, in helping, helping really bridge and sort of cushion the blow to those general funds. But again, all of those general fund services really do compete. So in, in 2016, the community voted what's called the Transportation Benefit District. We're going to talk a little bit about that for a 10-year period of time. That's set to expire in September 30th of next year. And then we've had, as new services have come along, the city actually voted to, in, in, or add an affordable housing sales tax of 1/10 of a percent. If you look at the big picture, a lot of folks say, I pay my sales tax, what is the city doing with it? The city actually gets a very small portion of your sales tax. The largest chunk of it goes to the state. And again, some of the local options come back to the city and the county for very specific services. Property tax, just a reminder too, we actually have a fairly low rate of property tax in this, in this, our city's rate anyway. And so property tax, again, if you look at every tax dollar, the city gets, and this was last year's, about 14% of that. The majority of your property tax funding actually goes to support schools. All right. So what's happened over time as we come across the crunch in the general fund budget to really balance all the services, over time, over the last 20 years, the support that we've used, given sales tax to support our streets has increased, it's really quadrupled over, over the last 20 years. And so that continues to add pressure to the general fund over time. And so one of the things we were looking at this last year was, was that public, and looking at this as a holistic system essentially, that our, our streets, if I look back here, our sales tax for streets, the blue is really to do capital projects, and the orange is to support the maintenance. And what we know is that if we preserve what we have, we don't have to do projects to rebuild those. And it's much cheaper and much more cost-effective to preserve our streets. So we're looking for a way to help, help preserve the streets over time. One of the funds that we have, this is a transportation benefit district that the voters approved in 2016, we've been, we have had a very narrow definition of, this has been used primarily for our transit or transit-related improvements. For instance, if we're going to put in a bus stop, maybe we'll do ADA ramps to make sure we can accommodate. So, and we've been very good at getting grants, especially over the last few years during the COVID years, to help support our transit services. And as a result, we've had an increasing fund balance. And so when we initially approached this budget balance, we were looking at, is it time to, to actually bring this back to the voters a little early and ask for the use of this, not just for transit, but for streets? So the trans, excuse me, the Transportation Benefit District is authorized by the state of Washington. It is really the primary revenue source that communities, that they enact. We are unique in that we use this primarily for transit. And so, and again, a lot of cities have instituted this. It's one of the questions when we're applying for state and federal grants, do you have a local transportation benefit district? And we can always check that box, but it doesn't always go for our streets. It, it's in our community, it is used primarily for our transit services. And so the law does, the law does allow up to 3/10 of a percent. The 1/10th of a percent can be council-matic, that means council can enact that. But since we already have a 2/10 of a percent, anything would need to be voted. And again, that will expire in September. And there are other options for license fees and things like that, that can be either council-matic or voted by the community. So as we balance the budget, we did recommend, as I mentioned, that council consider revoting the Transportation Benefit District, that's the TBD, and expand the use to transit and transportation, among a lot of other things to make sure we can close the gap. And again, we're looking at this as a holistic transit. You know, we use our streets, everybody uses our streets and, including our transit buses, and it's about connecting people and getting mobility in our community and making sure that we can get goods and services to, from one area to another. So as we looked, and we've had a number of discussions, we had a joint meeting with PTAC. PTAC is our Public Transit Advisory Committee, and I know there are some members tonight. They have held some special meetings to talk about what their recommendation is to renew this and possibly expand this. And so if we're looking at a voted measure, there are some things we want to consider. This graph was in your packet because if you, if you put something before, to the voters, there's a timeline of, of impact essentially. The Department of Revenue needs some time to implement, and so that will potentially inform some of your decision-making. So a couple of things have happened since we've started having this conversation. Our economy, maybe if you listen to the news, there are questions about recession, lots of uncertainty in our economy, and making sure that we're cognizant of what our community's interests are as you make decisions moving forward. One of the things we did find out, because as we looked at, as expanding this use for transit and transportation, we did a 10-year analysis, and we, our staff had projected that we could retain the same level of transit services if we were able to continue the same level of grants. What we found out just recently is one of, a portion of one of the grants that has, we've been successful in getting over time, has some language in the RCW that actually requires public transit agencies to maintain their sales tax at a level, that the same level that was instituted on January 1st, 2022. And we've actually had an interpretation of that done by WashDOD and the Attorney General's Office that said, if you actually expand the use of your transit, your TBD, Transportation Benefit District funding to include transit and your, your street preservation program, that would in essence lower the ability to use that for transit. And they, they believe that that would disqualify the city from retaining those grant dollars. There are other grant transit agencies that are looking at the same issue in a, in a different, is looking at potentially lowering their taxes. But WashDOD in their funding, in their operational funding bills for both the House side and the Senate side at the state, actually included the same language. And so that makes the, the revenue that we projected, the ability to continue our transit and transportation system improvements on, it makes the, the certainty of those grants, it puts in question and puts that at risk. So, and the other item we found is that the, last week, I believe, the Hospital District One made a, made a decision to move an operational levy forward on the August ballot. And that was sort of the ballot that I know council had been talking about and that PTAC members have been talking about as well. It's generally not a good idea to have more than one tax measure on a bill and, and, or excuse me, on a ballot. And so our recommendation would be to maybe consider other, other timing for that. And again, timing is absolutely everything, and that's what we're looking for from you tonight, are really a recommendation. So a couple of things, as I put forward in your packet, we actually put forward, forward five different options, and I'll cover those. I just want to make a distinction here. So the Transportation Benefit District is one mechanism that's allowed, allowed under state law for cities to use. Again, most cities use this for, for our transportation system, really for street maintenance programs and capital programs. And so it is, it's a, there's a 10-year sunset on this. It's authorized by RCW 3673, and it's 0455. And again, currently we have a 2/10 of a percent sales and use tax set to expire in September of next year. There is another mechanism that I know that PTAC members discussed, and to just wanted to clarify, it's a different sales tax, it's a transit sales tax, also authorized under similar, same chapter, different verse essentially. And so, but there's no sunset on this. And this is used by just a handful of city agencies, transit agencies, and there is no sunset on this. And so that was some of the discussion about, is, is, would they recommend using the transit benefit district, which is only allowed up to 3/10 of a percent for a city? Or would they look at the transit sales tax? And so there's the differentiation in, in those. And then again, as you're thinking and discussing this and providing direction, there are options to talk about phasing and contingencies through this. So, so what we put forward in your packet, and these were primarily outlined by the Public Transit Advisory Council, or Committee, and option number one, and their recommendation was, option number two, was to look at a 2/10, just to renew what we had and expand that use for 10 years. And so the option number two is what the, the PTAC committee recommended, and that was to renew the Transportation Benefit District, so to use that same mechanism, but also to increase it by 1/10 of a percent for, for street maintenance for 10 years. The third option they looked at was renew and increase the total and, and not make the distinction about the different uses to 3/10, and that's again for 10 years. Four, option number four, is new transit sales tax, and so using that other mechanism that doesn't have a sunset, and, and authorizing 3/10, asking the voters to authorize 3/10, plus a Transportation Benefit District of 1/10. And so that essentially would double the amount. And then number five option was the new transit sales tax, the same with a 2/10 plus a Transportation Benefit District option for 1/10. And I know that's a lot of acronyms in there. And so I also would, and I apologize to our Chair of PTAC, we missed some of the details in the PTAC recommendation, so I didn't know if Councilmember Miller would like to speak to that.
Well, thank you. Not at length. We've got a couple of members and some other staff here could fill in some gaps. I think you covered it. I'd be happy to provide background, but I'm just as happy to let the conversation continue.
Perfect. Excellent.
Whichever you prefer.
So that is my presentation. So tonight, you know, you're, what we're looking for from you is direction on, at what point do you want to bring a ballot measure back? So timing and then what would be the content? And we would have to come back to you with a resolution and likely do a public hearing at a future meeting.
Counsel. Do you want to collect some public input and then have the conversation?
Okay, can I ask a question first? So clarify.
Yes.
Option two, the PTAC's recommendation, we would maintain the 0.2% for transit, would, does that put the grants in jeopardy?
No.
No.
That would retain that separate service at the same level.
Same level as 2022.
So option three would, if we.
It could.
Could. We wanted that flexibility between the two funds.
Correct. And we would have, likely have some time to do a little more research with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out that as these options were crafted, that was before we received the legal interpretation from the Attorney General's Office. There was a, a thought, a pretty consistent thought within the staff level that there was opportunities to move the money back and forth as it was needed within the TBD, and I think we found that that's not really the case. I would, just to put a little cap on it before we get into it, I just want to make clear that, you know, PTAC was asked to provide input on transit, because that's what PTAC does. And I think that there was, I think, I don't want to overstate it, but I would say that there was a, a strong consensus that PTAC members and PTAC as a group supports funding for street maintenance. This is essential. And I think the structural imbalance that we know, from the PTAC perspective, and I'm going to speak in general terms, there isn't really a structural imbalance in transit in the sense that what we, what we spend, north of 80% of the revenues needed for operating revenue comes from our local community. That's both sales tax, the 2/10, and the $75,000 a year that's contributed through Central Student Association. Obviously, if we were to cut, go down the path of reducing it to 1/10, even if you just look at the numbers, that's about one, 2/10 is about $1.6 million in 2024 dollars. So cut it in half and take $800,000 out of the mix, and that, that flips the script quite a bit. You end up creating what we talk about we never want to do, and that is to, when we get one-time grant, or ARPA money or other dollars, there's a, there's a very clear message that you don't want to build programs around grants. You don't want to, have to rely on grant money to maintain operations. One-time builds, capital projects, it's perfect. That is exactly what the scenario would be if we had to go from 80-some percent locally funded to 40%, 45%. And that's really at heart, I think, what PTAC members are concerned with. Because I don't think any PTAC member believes that the system could be operated, you know, anything close to what we have today with a budget of about, say, $800,000 a year. The other thing too is that, what PTAC members will say is that maintaining the current system is, is one thing, but we've got parts of the community that aren't served, we've got parts of the community that aren't served as well as they could be. So that there is, we anticipate as the community grows, demand for transit will increase. And it's difficult to imagine how that can be done with half as much money. So the reality is, the worst-case scenario for that is, and it may be moot now because I don't think anyone wants to jeopardize getting grants, but the worst-case scenario is that the grant money dries up, and then we've got the cash reserves to use. But if we had no grant money over the course of four or five years, we would exhaust the reserves and we would effectively have to shut our operations down. So that's kind of the broad, sort of the broad strokes, and I, but I just want to emphasize that, you know, and as far as counsel's concerned, the listed bullet points, I just want to take, I just want to make clear that, that this, I don't want to put this on PTAC as a group. We were, after our meeting on the 18th, we all got together. We were, after our meeting on the 18th, we all got together, everybody decided they could provide input. We had letters written and members provided input. My, I put these together. These are my bullet points and, and I think I captured the consensus, but I don't want to put this on any individual PTAC member. The, the intent was that all of this information would be consolidated into a group, you know, a memo that the PTAC group could review and basically have a chance to say yeah or make changes. That didn't happen, so I just want to make clear that this is a set of bullet points that came from me, but I think captured the, the feelings of PTAC largely. So yeah, I think there's, you know, there's a lot of excitement. I think when we look at the numbers, PTAC's, you know, we look at Central Transit's numbers, where ridership is up. It's up, not just the fixed route ridership, but the services that are currently offered, like the, the cabulance service and the dial-a-ride services and the connector services. These are things that the community has come to rely on. And there's a significant, there's a lot of benefits and we'll go into, but, but it's, I think, as far as the cost, I think it's absolutely appropriate that the voters make the decision about what they want to support. And I think the cost is, the costs are transparent, they should be transparent. And I think when, when the measure passed in 2016, it was something like 62%, which is pretty uncommon for ballot measures. So I think that's probably enough.
Okay. Now we're going to take audience comments. This will be before we make, potentially make a decision. So same rules, three minutes. Introduce yourself. Don't disrupt the meeting. Don't cause disruption to the meeting.
Okay, I'll try. I'm Jim Hersch and I live in Ellensburg.
Just, Jim, can you make sure you speak into the?
Sure. Jim Hersch, I live in Ellensburg. I'm also one of the PTAC members, but I'm, because I'm speaking on my own behalf. I previously sent you all an email back in January talking about importance of transit as a matter of equity and inclusion. And I sent an email in March. I don't see it in the packet, but hopefully that makes your way there if it's supposed to be part of the mail. Okay. And that one sort of highlighted that there's the, the 0.2% transit tax we currently have is already the lowest in the state. And cutting it in half basically just is not functional. You can't have a good, good functional system. Relying upon grants makes no more sense anymore. If you look at the, the reason we have a big, or a pretty good surplus right now is because during the Biden administration, there was a lot of money sent to local transit. We decided not to just spend it. We wanted to get the system running more efficiently and we paying a hell of a lot of the money for future. And I think that was a good plan, given the fact that we can expect a little grant money right now. And also I put in a part there about voter demographics, just so you didn't get confused with what happens in the unincorporated county for road tax purposes with what can happen in the city. Because those are whole different demographics, different issues. Couple of things I wanted to do is, and they're kind of inspired by the presentation at the hospital board last week. I don't know if any of you saw that or not, but the one that, the, the biggie for me was ask for what you need. Don't ask for what you think can get passed. And if your vision is you want a transit system in this community, then you need to fund it so you have a transit system that's functional and meaningful. And if you cut the money in half, I have been trying to run numbers to figure out what we could have for a system and it would be this shell of what we have right now. It really wouldn't be very helpful. It wouldn't be functional. The hours would be reduced. If you don't ride transit, I mean, people are getting there to work, they're coming down to shop, they're going to the doctor, they're going to their appointments, they're getting to classes, the students are coming downtown and spending money instead of porting on Amazon, sort of a thing. And so it's, it's really good for the whole community. So I think it's really important. It's also a hard sell to ask the voters to vote for a tax that will create a deficient system. When you're going to have a tax, you want it for a system that the voters want to support because it's a solid one. Also, want to point out, we're not asking you to raise the taxes. We're asking you to give the voters a voice in what the future of our community would look like. And I think if we're going to have a transit system, let's have a functional and valuable one. And also since it sounds like the hospital district's going to have theirs on the August ballot, I'd suggest you don't put it on the August ballot. Because that's one of the other primary things is you never put them up against each other because they compete and neither do very well. So my time is about ready to run out, so I will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Victoria Thomas, resident of the City of Ellensburg. I just want to speak on behalf of myself, but talk about how important the bus system is. I don't have a car of my own. I have to coordinate with my family members for a car. I use the bus system to go to the gym, go down to city events, and I know there are lots of other people who use the bus for other things as the gentleman just mentioned. So I do think it's important for us to maintain and in the future, improve the bus system of Ellensburg. I'm super proud of my hometown for having a little bus that's free for people to get on, that's available every day of the year except like five days, and it's very user-friendly. So I'm appreciative of that and I hope that we continue to fund it and fund it so we can expand it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're not getting any indications online, so counsel, we're looking for staff direction so to develop a resolution in language for the future, future ballot measure and our timeline if we choose to go that direction.
I would, I would offer for the timeline conversation. I, I would agree that August is not ideal and I would, I would support November. If we get to a point where there's an agreement on a ballot, a measure, I'd suggest November would be appropriate.
I'll just put something on the floor for discussion. I'll move to, to recommend or to, to direct staff to bring us back a, and it's not going to be an ordinance, it's going to be, what is it, a resolution to, to move option two forward to the voters with a November election date.
I'll second.
Motion second to ask staff to bring back a resolution that would ask the voters to renew the 0.2% Transit Benefit District sales and use property tax under RCW 3673 and enact an additional 0.1% TBD for street preservation activities. Discussion.
I, I came here tonight thinking I, I wanted option three to, to allow that flexibility for when, when we did get grants, maybe, and we had a big, big street maintenance project going, we could pull a little more money that way. And, and when we needed more for transit, we could kind of shift it that way and it would allow us that flexibility. But given, I, I think it's easier and clearer for voters if, if we just make it clear how much is going for transit and because I, I do, I understand the PTAC folks feeling, I guess, threatened by the proposal. But, and I understand that this is an additional 0.1% sales tax at a time when inflation is getting out of control again and, but I, I agree with the, we have to ask for what we need and we, we do need some relief for the transportation maintenance projects. And, and I guess I'd say I want, I want to expand transit and I want to fully fund all of the libraries' needs and all of the parks' needs and all of the police departments' needs. All of it comes from the same place. And we have to live within our means, but at the same time, with, with the potential loss of federal and state funding, we need to be self-sufficient to the extent we can as well. So.
I would just add, we've had a lot of conversations at PTAC over the last year and a half or longer, knowing that this is coming up. And I think that as one of the committee members, Mr. Hersch, mentioned, the, the idea of the, the cash balance growing has been really the product of our success in terms of getting available grants through WashDOD and other sources. But I think there's a recognition that we've got some work to do. I think if we think about this first phase of PTAC or of Central, Ellensburg Transit, if you will, we started with, really from the ground up, right? So this first 10 years has been the, the initial building stage. And I think that as the system is maturing, we're seeing the need for more systematic planning, financial planning and capital planning to see what it would really take to build the system out as we're envisioning, but also really managing the reserve or the cash balances as an effective reserve, you know, a rainy day situation. Because, you know, as long as we can continue to get grants, we, we need to really keep up, we don't want to discourage the city from pursuing outside funding from the state or federal government, whatever it's available, because it will help leverage the local dollars. I think what we need to do internally is we have a lot of work to sort of sort out how much flexibility we have in terms of using excess funds to support the streets as long as the basic level for transit is maintained. And I think there are ways to do that that still fit within the law. But again, that's, it's going to take a little bit of work. I would also say that, and we know this already, is that I think we might have gotten the, it's not exactly the cart before the horse, but the, the expiration of the TBD tax, we knew was coming. And it was framed, you know, from the transit perspective, it was framed as it's the funding mechanism for central transit. And it's going to have a conver, it'll require a conversation with the community about whether the community thinks it's important to maintain that. But the problem we've run into is that we sort of ran headlong into the structural imbalance. That is, we don't have enough money to keep our streets maintained. That isn't a, in my opinion, that is not a transit problem. That's a, that's a funding problem that has nothing to do with central transit. But the conversation has sort of gotten a little bit turned like, well, we can avoid that problem if we can just shift some of the money. Well, that seems to have recentered and that doesn't seem to be possible now without other consequences. So I do believe though, that when it comes time to communicate to the community the value of whatever ballot measure is presented, we really have to tell the story about what our street maintenance needs are. And, and there's a lot of information in our packet. It's just very difficult, I think, for, you know, for folks to get their head around just how deep of structural deficit there might be on an ongoing basis. It really requires some real thought in terms of what we can fund. So yeah, we have a story to tell, but it's not just a transit story. It's a street story.
Anybody else?
I agree with everything that's been said. I, I think your point, your last point's really critical for the community to understand. We need, we need this funding mechanism for streets because it's going to break the bank with the city if we don't do it. Or we're going to have to cut back on services or we're not going to have street maintenance because the general fund revenue is just not there right now. And the forecasts for the future are, are not optimistic that it's going to increase significantly to take that pressure off. So I think that is a really important story. Councilmember Miller, that is a huge part of this.
So I think it's, it's important to, you know, sort of state the other side of the argument, and that's that, you know, at some point, we have to make decisions about levels of services and which services we provide. And there are, you know, advocacy groups for each set of services, you know, just in the last week, we've received a lot of feedback that we're not funding the pool. By the way, that's a $40 million replacement in today's dollars. And we're trying to fund, you know, what could be a $63 million, you know, rec, rec center. And so I, I mean, I think it's important to, you know, for us to acknowledge that we have a responsibility to set policy and streets really aren't optional, but some of the things we do are optional and we're basing our decisions on that. And I'm, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this. I, I'm not very comfortable with this and I think we run the risk of not passing it. And I think we might have to have that conversation. You know, funding these kinds of services out of sales tax makes some sense for me, but at some point, your business climate becomes impacted by sales tax level. And we can't compete with some of the other communities in Eastern Washington, in part because of decisions that were made 50 and 100 years ago regarding power generation and those kinds of things. And so we're at a little bit of a disadvantage to begin with that. And, you know, we're, we're asking people to spend some very real money. Some of it comes from outside the community, I get that, on something that serves a portion of the community. And I'm not opposed to public transit. And I advocated very strongly, I supported the last one with the cabulance component. That's an unusual service for a government to pay for and it may be something we want to look at. So I, I get it. I'm, you know, because we're, we're handing this off to the voters, I'm comfortable with it. If it were us passing it, my answer would be no.
Yeah, I'll follow that up. I mean, I, I always like to look at the dollars. Streets provide a service to 100% of us, right? You call a community an ambulance, you need a road to get there. And, and I worry that we get too far away. We've already cut back on some of the services we provide to our streets. Chip services, chip ceiling is down, I think from what, five to two basically. So we're already in a deficit on our streets going into this. You know, buses provide a service, parks provide a service, we provide lots of services and there's a balance on what we can and can't afford. High inflationary environment, I agree. The taxes go up, spending at businesses go down and it becomes regressive in nature. I'm still getting my head around the cost in terms of like, what are we absolutely, like what are we subsidizing? How many individuals and how much dollars are we spending per individual? Looking at it from a rides perspective is hard. And I would also gauge that probably more than 3% of ridership comes from CWU, so why aren't we asking for them to increase the amount of money they put into the system? To at least help offset that cost if it's a big priority for them. And, and, you know, I rode the bus in high school. I had a subsidized metro card that my school district paid for. I went back and forth on metro. I went to my job in high school. So I'm not anti-bus. I just want to make sure that we're fully evaluating the cost of what this is. And every time we spend money on one thing, we're not spending it on another. And then in terms of the ballot timing, we're, we're hoping that voters will look at their budget and it, you know, on a quarterly basis that, well, if we can get one by on August, we can get the next one on November, but if we put the same dollar figure together on a single ballot, it wouldn't pass. So I mean, I think there's some political gamesmanship. I understand the whole ballot positioning and unfortunately it is a game, but I think I'm okay taking it to voters once I have a chance to see what's actually on it. We don't have that right now, but I do agree with the mayor that if this was just a straight council vote, I would be a no right now. So that's my two cents.
Well, I think you guys know from all my previous meetings that I am a big guy that supports infrastructure and being able to take care of our streets. That being said, I was also that poor college student that rode the bus, free bus at Texas Tech and at Purdue University. I was very grateful for a fantastic bus system in both of those cities. And it serves our community in a very, very important way, especially those that can't get to a lot of services because they don't have vehicles. And if you believe that we are heading into recession and, and some of those things, that there are going to be more people that are going to need that public transportation available to them. So I looked at this as a pro-con within the different options. So option two, since this is the one that's currently the motion's on, I see the pros associated with this is absolutely you're giving it to the voters to be able to look at it. Let them decide. If they decide to go for it, fantastic. Then we have a revenue stream that takes care of our system. We're no longer dependent on grants. And that goes back to what we were just talking about when it comes to the power stuff. Our resiliency is our self-sufficiency. We're no longer dedicating ourselves to grants. Looking on an average over the last seven years, we've gotten 34% of our funding from grants. And so that's a big amount of money that would go away if, if grants just dried up. So that's a consideration. So that's a consideration for the pro. It also means that we have dedicated money associated with taking care of our streets. We're not playing a game of going back and forth and that kind of stuff. But Josh and the mayor are correct as far as my concerns when it gets to the ballot in November. Depending on what's happening with the hospital ballot in, in a earlier month, by the time you get to November, this may not be favorable. It depends on the economic environment. That's maybe the last thing that people are looking for. I liked option one because it kind of gave us that flexibility and balance, but because option two is the ability to give it to voters, I, I, I support it as well, so.
Okay.
I, I agree that streets are foundational, that 1870 or whatever, we had streets before we had anything else. So I guess if, if this were to fail, I, I think, I think we can make a good pitch for it, but, but it does depend on a lot of external stuff about how folks are feeling. And, and I can't predict till November, but if it were to fail, we'll have some hard decisions to make. But I, you know, from my perspective, streets get maintained before other things happen. And so if that, you know, like I said, it, it comes, it's competing with the library parks, et cetera, et cetera. So, and I don't know if we want to message that, but that the reality is the streets are going to get maintained because we have to.
Okay, so the motion is to direct staff to come back with a resolution that would ask the voters to renew the 0.2% transportation benefit district sales and use tax per the RCW and enact an additional 0.1% TBD for street preservation activities. And we are shooting for the November ballot. So that's what we're voting on. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye to a vote aye opposed. That motion passes. All right, we're going to power through. 11B, page 287, is an employment agreement with Christopher E. Horner, and there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Heidi Baron, Cernaway City Manager. You have before you an employment agreement with Chris Horner to serve as Ellensburg City Attorney, and this is following Teri Weiner's retirement this year. So typically, it is the city manager who has, who has hiring authority and responsibility for all city employees. But any terms of agreement, I like to outline those in employment agreements to protect the city and also protect the employee, and that's beyond the city manager's purchasing authority. So you have the agreement before you requesting approval. And I also know that Mr. Horner is in the audience tonight, and I would love to introduce him or actually have him introduce himself.
Good evening, Council. I've met some of you before. Some of you are, I look forward to getting to know you and working with you in the future. I've lived in Ellensburg for 11 years, working in the county prosecutor's office. I've appreciated the city as a resident, and I look forward to joining the team as, with Heidi and Erin as a staff member. I keep hearing the phrase drinking from a fire hose, so I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and getting, getting to work.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you're looking for just a council straight up and down vote?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're looking for approval and authorization for the city manager to sign the contract.
Mr. Mayor, after I motion, I move that we authorize the city manager to sign the employment agreement with Christopher H. Horner, outlining terms as the Ellensburg City Attorney.
Second.
Motion second to approve the contract as presented in our packet and authorize the city manager to sign the employment agreement. Is there any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye to a vote aye opposed. That motion passes.
Before we move on, can I just compliment staff? I think this, it's always, for those of us who've been up here for a while, we, we don't see a lot of staff turnover at this level. So it's always a bit of a challenge, and it's a lot of work, but I, I just think that this was handled very, very smoothly and very, in a very efficient way. So I just think that goes unnoticed, but it didn't happen by accident, I'd say. So congratulations to everyone involved.
So after the fact, I'm going to point out that there was public comment opportunity. Okay, not bad. Item 12A, page 300, is the manager's report.
Right.
It's a big one.
It is a big one, and I will not make you suffer through all of the details. I actually have a few items to add to the report. You have a few items at the dais tonight. A few of these are requests by council. One of those is to look at the list of consulting agreements for the last couple of years. This isn't entirely cleaned up, but as you recall, we, the city hires consultants for a variety of reasons. Oftentimes, they are specialty skills that we don't have in-house, and we have a very thin staff and not a whole lot of capacity. And so we use a fair amount of consultants oftentimes to design things, to study things, and to help us prepare feasibility for decision-making. So if you have any questions, please let me know. I'm happy to look up details and kind of help you, help you maneuver through that list. The other item that you have on your dais is a list of federal funding, essentially. So we put together, just ran some real, real quick reports. And I know this is a request from council from our last meeting as well, and they're, they're separated by function. And the question is, you know, what sorts of concerns or federal funding do we have out there? And primarily, these are generally projects or very specific things. I think other than transit, we have very few services where we actually use federal dollars for operations at any time. So if you have questions about these, I know that, I believe, the League of Women Voters has requested participants, they've asked me to talk a little bit about this and a little bit about the, the federal funding that the, the city provides or has in, in our budget. And so again, any questions, please let me know. Let's see here. As Nicole mentioned earlier tonight, we do an annual mailed newsletter, so we take all of the details and from all of the amazing services that we provide and accomplishments from the previous year, this still goes down into a mailed form that will hopefully be hitting mailboxes early next week. I know it's in print as we speak. And finally, one, let's see here, one additional, I talked to most of you about this. I understand, we have three council seats up for election this year, and so we've talked about there, there's a number of folks that may be interested in running. One of the things we'd like to do is set up a sort of candidate education opportunity, and we would actually record this and post it online so everyone has access. We like to give folks access to understanding what your role is and also any details about priorities and city services. And so I'd actually work with our department heads to arrange for a time prior to filing week to provide that opportunity and, and access and, and education. So we'll get that information out in the next couple of weeks here as we can clarify date. So, and if there were any questions, I'd be happy to answer those on the information that is in the manager's report. Otherwise, I would pass it back to the mayor.
Any questions for the city manager? We'll start with council member reports. Councilmember Rochelle.
Okay, so I don't have much, wow, that was loud. Sorry. For my meetings, they're all coming up this week, but I had, I was busy. So I worked, I was the council representation at the Ellensburg Downtown Association for their strategic planning, and I actually got to do two of those. I went as a city council member and I also went as a business owner to two separate roundtables. And it was a wonderful experience that there were, our Ellensburg Downtown Association is working very hard to, to, to meet our community's needs, and so it was a great thing. I also enjoyed Teri's retirement party. And then also, I was lucky, fortunate to go to the earthquake training with the cadet task emergency response. It was amazing. And I have to take my hats off. I hope that some of our city staff watches this. I was so impressed with the heads of our departments and with the hospital and our first responders and just what they have in place and what they're doing behind the scenes to make it all work. And it was just a very, very good experience, and I, I was happy that I got to go to that.
A couple of things. I attended a Braber Angels presentation over at Hal Holmes a couple of weeks or so ago. Braber Angels, an organization that offers training to communities and groups on how to communicate difficult conversations. This was kind of an introduction to what that would look like. So it was very interesting. It was well done, and we had some opportunities to practice some of the skills that are taught in the main course. At some point, they'll circle back around with a training for the Ellensburg community. So I would encourage anybody who's interested in that to, to watch for that opportunity for that training. It's being done in a number of other cities here in Washington State, and it's been very successful. I'm still, the five-year plan work group for the homeless affordable housing, five-year plan, new five-year plan is, continues to me. We are finalizing a draft at this point that will go to the homeless affordable housing committee for review. I think we're trying to offer, hoping to offer some opportunity for community input into that as well. But stay tuned for those announcements. They'll be coming soon because we have to have a plan presented and approved by, I believe, by the end of June. So it's coming down to the wire on that. But I'm very excited about the plan. I think it might be one of the best ones we've ever had. We certainly did make a valiant effort to get more community input at the beginning of the plan, and a lot of the recommendations and things that came out of the surveys and the focus group work that we did are in, being incorporated into that, into the new plan. Just want to let you know that Hope Source met today, not Hope Source, but the homeless affordable housing commission met today and we approved to fully fund two new projects. One here in Ellensburg that would add about eight, eight units of housing project that Hope Source has going. And then we approved funding for a habitat project in the upper county that's going to be very similar to the Bender Road project in terms of the number of homes and opportunities that provided for homeownership up there. So it will be fun to watch that come to fruition. And, yeah, it's pretty exciting. We had a little bit of a windfall between this meeting and the last meeting. We, we were able to, we rolled back into the coffers some funding that we had awarded to the IOOF cemetery for their project, which didn't materialize. And so we were able to combine that funding with what we have on hand, and we're able to fund both projects. So it was pretty, pretty cool to be a part of that.
Nancy, too.
I attended an environmental commission meeting. They're planning an April 26th recycling event and May Bike Month. And I think the messaging for the recycling event has gone out, and I don't, and the flyers for Bike Month have gone out too as well. The utility advisory commission reviewed the electric system plan. I attended a Yakima Basin Fish and Wildlife Recovery Board meeting down in Union Gap and talked about urban streams down there. I also did the strategic planning for the Ellensburg Downtown Association and a, paid the, paid the medical bills of the law enforcement and firefighters, the retired folks. And there was an article in The Observer that Ellensburg ranks 13 in the rentcafe.com's report on the best college towns in the U.S., as well as ninth most hospitable towns in Washington by the world atlas.com. So we're, we're making the news in a positive ways, too.
Not much in the last few weeks. PTAC meeting, we've talked about already, and got some more meetings in the next week or two. Also, I'd like to request an excused absence for the second meeting in June, it would be June 16th.
Didn't you do that already, or was that the first meeting in June?
I think I did. I got the first one.
Yeah, same.
We're the first.
Oh, okay. Someone, okay.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to excuse David for that date.
Second.
Motion second to excuse Councilmember Miller from the June 16th city council meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye to a vote aye opposed. That motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to say it's going to be fun, but I have a feeling I'm going to have to hear a lot about how the federal government funding is at risk at an airport. So I'll be out of town. So thank you.
Okay.
All right. Remember what I did for you about 10 seconds ago?
I can tell you the final score if you want.
No, no, don't tell me that. What I'm going to say is I need an excused absence for April 21st. So if you guys could dismiss me for that, I would appreciate it.
I would make the motion that we authorize an excused absence for Councilmember Palmer for...
April 21st.
April 21st.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion second, excused absence for Councilmember Palmer, April 21, 2025. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye to a vote aye opposed. That motion passes.
All right, thank you. So my updates are affordable housing. We had updates on the pathways and the Pine Street projects, and we've been focusing a lot on ADUs. ADUs is an avenue in which a lot of homeowners in our community can take advantage of the assets of their property and hopefully build in some income property on their parcel, on their plot, while also helping out with our housing inventory here in the, in the community. So we'll have more conversations. The intention here is how do we get developers with bankers and informing citizens that that is an option for them if they're interested in generating some additional income. So those are things we're talking about. I was also part of the earthquake exercise. It was fantastic during that meeting. I was wearing my CW hat, so just thinking about all the impacts there. But it's a, it's a complex network of people that are working for the protection of our county and to our city and all our emergency responses. It's fantastic. Law and justice meets next week, so I don't have an update on that. UAC, our utility advisory meeting, was that power engineering report, so we went in details with that, and my next meeting is next Thursday. Steer I-90 is, there was no update on that. And then the county solid waste, hasn't met yet. One side note is the wall that heals. I think people were around to see information associated with that. Russell Colmore came in here and gave a presentation. He's making the rounds. He mentioned originally as far as signups being sometime at the end of March, going into April. That has been pushed back to June, so more information will be available on that. So if you're interested in that signup, and I know a lot of us are, just wait until June, so.
Josh. Cool. Mines were light, had landmarks last week, and it was a fairly light meeting. I've got parks coming up on Wednesday, and then quarterly city finance coming up, I think it's April 21st, I believe, 21st to 23rd. That's it.
So I had an opportunity to visit our legislators from our 13th district last week, mainly for 911, but did talk to them about city issues and just appreciate the fact that they are very supportive of the things we ask them. So that was good. Mayor meeting, lots of discussion just about what federal funding issues might be, some of which has actually already been pulled out of upper county communication cities. I traveled last week and had an opportunity to go to the National World War I Museum in Kansas City. I never really fully appreciated what World War I was, and it's a little scary to see the worlds lining up the same way. So that was not cool. I would like very much for the utility advisory committee to begin conversations, you know, reasonably aggressively about power generations and getting smart meters into our electrical system. So how do I just?
I'll relay the message when I get there next Thursday.
I don't know if that's something that the rest of the council, I'd like it I don't know if that's something that the rest of the council, I'd like it to be a little bit stronger than me just asking, so I guess.
I would agree.
Yeah, I think it...
Okay, so the consensus is yes?
Yeah, absolutely.
You got it.
We adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah, someone coming?
Haven't found a score.
Ah, no, don't tell them, don't tell them.
Let me just look.
Don't tell them.
I see that smile, and I think I'm...
Well, don't misinterpret my thought. It must have been a heck of a game.
Oh, damn it, you just gave it away.